She said that was her trying to call, so you'll have a message?
I was dialing your number.
Hello?
Hello?
When you get out there, she was trying to come back.
That is on motorcycle.
That's when I heard it.
Bassman just pulled it up.
That's Chad.
Okay.
Well, conserving the energy.
Did you not get the memo?
What about me, I'm like right on time.
What's the problem?
Fair enough.
And about seven seconds, you would've been late. And then I couldn't pick on you.
Never.
Can you come by? Can you sign?
He needs some water, Katie.
I think this all of this will let somebody else in. Sorry.
We'll get him.
There's others wanting to go there.
Tell me.
Yeah, that's all you're saying.
Everybody getting on the team.
I'm sure you're kind of startled here.
Drive calling Michael.
Michael's here.
Oh, you gotta break up me.
It's crazy.
Don't worry.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. We've got a little corn, so we'll go ahead and open the white prayer. Good Lord, thank you for giving us another wonderful day on this earth. While we continue to pray for rain, we also pray for patience and understanding. We know you hear our prayers, and you're working on a solution for this drought. Lord, we also pray for the people and families affected by the terrible storms our areas witnessed the last several days. Sometimes our problems don't nearly seem as bad compared to the issues other people are facing right now. Lord, thank you for the people that take time out of their busy schedule to serve on this council, guide and direct us in all that we may say in your name and pray. Amen. First part is to approve the meeting, the minutes from the regular meeting. Everybody's had a chance to look over those?
I have two questions on them. On number four, when we were supposed to enter into session with Sunny, I don't remember, I mean, I guess it was tagged, but I don't remember us voting on it to be tagged.
I think we voted on it near number three.
And where you were supposed to talk, we didn't table that one. And like I said, it was pointed out to me that, you know, we should, you know, make sure that we vote on that and stuff. I don't remember voting on that.
Michael Wilson made a motion, and Billy Carter made seconded.
I guess I was just in law land on that one.
I'd have had that be seconded, that.
No, that would've been horrible. That would've been horrible. Yeah, that would've been. But I didn't remember that one, and I just wanted to make sure. And then on number 11, that, you know, we should've, if we were gonna have no discussion, you know, we needed to do that for that, too.
So we need the minutes to show that Michael made the motion, Billy seconded. Take no action on board for our... And there wasn't any action at all on number 11. Any other corrections?
I make a motion, we accept.
You made amended?
The amended, you have to say the amended one.
I screwed it up already. Dr. Bassman makes a motion, Michael seconded. To approve the amended budget. Hall four? Hall opposed? Motion canceled.
I just didn't remember. I mean, I didn't really remember it. I said it would've been horrible if I'd been going first or second. It would've been horrible.
All right, the next part is where we will swear in new city council members.
I hope you have that. I'm glad that you did.
First form is just a statement of elected or appointed officers where they swear that they have not been directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, promised to contribute any money or thing value, promised any public office or employment for the getting or withholding of a vote at the election as a reward to secure their appointment or confirmation. So handle those two, and Rusty?
Oh, we do?
You have to do the hand.
Yeah, with the sign on.
Because you were just...
You retired, man.
Sign on, and I'll type everything else out. And then back to back.
Thank you.
I'm amended. I don't know the signature.
You're Dr. Teague?
Talk about it. We'll point out that's working the signature. That's only part of the work. Well, that's for class. The next part is oath of office. Rusty, you want to go first? Michael, that's your key. Thank you so much for your service.
You'll miss us. You don't have to leave.
Yeah, I know.
Slaying gravel.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Charles Roaston Harris, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member of the city of Ashramont, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. You have the... Great Lord. Chris?
In the name and by authority of the state of Texas, I, Chris Levine, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member of the city of Ashramont, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
I will.
I already did this, didn't I?
You were so good the first time.
All right, well...
Don't mess up. Maybe you might.
In the name of and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Frederick Passman, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member of the city of Ashramont, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. You have the... Great Lord. Sign this right here. Chris?
In the name and by authority of the state of Texas, I, Chris Levine, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member of the city of Ashramont, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
I will.
I already did this, didn't I?
You were so good the first time.
All right, well...
Don't mess up. Maybe you might.
In the name of and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Frederick Passman, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member of the city of Ashramont, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
I so affirm.
The next is just a certificate of election, where in the name and by the authority of the city of Ashramont, Texas, this is to certify that a general election was paled and that Chris Levine was newly elected city council member, as well as Dr. Frederick Passman and Charles Roaston Harris.
Even though those say it was paled, the state said we still had to feel those out even though we didn't have an election. But we still have to have an election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to appoint a new mayor pro temp. Billy Carter is currently serving as a mayor pro temp, and I would recommend that she, if she's willing to serve, that she serve again next year. However, we'll open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Rusty Harris.
Are you willing, Billy?
Well, I mean, I know she's got a job, he's got a job, you got a job, I got a job. Rusty, I mean, that would just be, you know, something he could maybe do, you know, if he was around, you know, and stuff, too, and nobody would have a job. Well, he doesn't have a job. Well, you know what I'm saying? He gets to, you know, devote a lot of attention to learning the laws and the rules and stuff like that, and he's already started anyway. So I just thought that would not be something, I know you're still, are you still trying to go to school, you know? And you wouldn't be, you know, and like I said, I'm not saying you're not doing a good job or nothing like that. I was just trying to take some of the pressure off of you. And Chris and Dr. Passman both have jobs. I have jobs, you know? So, you know, I just thought, you know, being something, you know, get somebody new and with ideas and, you know, and stuff like that.
There's a nomination for Rusty? Is there any other nominations? I mean, I know that Billy, if she obviously wants to serve again, I think that's... There's a nomination for Billy? Any other nominations? Close court nominations are fairly divisive to make a secret ballot to vote on this. We have some...
Does it have any particularly kind?
You know. One vote for Rusty? One vote for Billy? One vote for Rusty? One vote for Billy? And one vote for Billy.
Billy, you're our mayor pro temp for the next year.
Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Martha Jones.
As you notice in your package, all about our financial reports from both the EDC and the IDC, my director's report, the main thing I want to discuss is this picture that had, I mean, a paper that has the list of projects. When we had the meeting, planning meeting in the first of April that we invited all the boards to, this is the list, the second page is the list of everything that the boards said we need issues, that we felt were issues in our community. Everything from housing to water to school to jobs, job retention, financial situations, upgrade the hospital, et cetera, et cetera. Then they had us, after we listed all of these projects, they had us prioritize them. And it wasn't saying you decided if it was a one being least important, five being the most important. They gave us an option in a one, three, and five, and we put them up there, and it was a better way of sorting how we prioritize. If you'll notice, the top 10 or 11, the yellow circles is what the economic development, EDC, IDC is in charge of doing on the one that has the purple sheet. The green is what they decided the city would be, could be in charge of. That's preparing, and that's like the first one that y'all would be helping with would be the preparing for the oil revenues, and that's the chamber, the EDC and the city, because it is coming. Whether, you know, it could be five years from now, but we're gonna have some show of clean shell activity from us. If it's just a service companies through the oil field or whatever, we're gonna get affected somehow. And then the other is the downtown cleanup, clean up properties, build a park and wreck areas, and animal control issues are the main things that they are saying the city should be responsible for. The hospital will be presented with one of these. The water board, they, you know, they're saying the water board should be in charge of the water supply, stuff like that, because I know they're, they're kind of the background of the water problems or part of the water. So that's why the WB could be the city instead of the water board, however y'all wanna do it. But the thing of it is, these are things that the board members, and these board members are the ones that have been appointed or elected to the boards, to the hospital, to the city, to the school, to the county, to the senior citizen. These are the people that have taken the responsibility of our community, saying, "We want to be the leaders. We want to help these problems." Or help find solutions for this, because that's the whole thing is, we know we all have these problems, we've got to find the solutions. There are three checks on here, and that three checks is kind of, yeah, we already reached out of 40, we got three down, which is a new school, local newspaper, and a dollar store. Those three things are already in the works of coming. Anyway, I just want y'all to be aware of this, because this is something that gives us each board an idea of what they need to work on. Or hopefully as a group, and that's what we're all trying to do, is as a group, let's join together, figure out our vision for our community, because it's like, we need to decide if we want our community to continue to best speed. Drive-through on 83, you can stop at Allsups, get you a burrito and gas and go on, or is there a reason for us to stop here and maybe even to live? And that's what, that's what purpose of this is, let's make our community better. And I just really wanted to emphasize that y'all look at it, think about it, and then as the year goes by, we'll be trying to organize more community involvement in this project. Do y'all have any questions on any of our activities for the EDC or IDC through any of the financial reports or the municipal board?
Just a related issue, the water board, what authority is that created out of, and are those elected or appointed officials?
They're not really elected, are they, Bill?
Yes.
They are elected, okay. Is the water board the Stonewall County Water District Board? It's kind of what we were implying it to be.
And so that's it? And that's created out of Texas Administrative Code, or what is that created out of?
No, it's just something that they started years ago where they drilled the wells. And they'll probably explain more on this water contingency plan and all that kind of, the water problems. Or you can explain it.
Actually, the, they, the water board can find a dependable water source, they could be able to do that, but the distribution system would have, wouldn't be in quality because they couldn't get it in that.
But their governing authority is from the legislature, is it not?
Yeah, but they're still, it's a PWS, so they have no authority over the PWS.
PWS?
So who would we put in charge of that? We're in a city, so y'all need to put some more stuff on y'all's then.
Anything to do with the distribution collection or quality of the water is the city. So the water board is a subservient committee of... Yeah, they have the water wells themselves. They own the water wells, but...
But under what, trying to get what authority we have to create the water board? It's a political subdivision, isn't it?
You want me to?
Yes.
In the early 50s, Dr. Passman, everything got a wheel drive around here, and the commissioners' board set up the Ashramont Water Development Board. They sold, what, bonds, thank you, for $340, $80, $280,000, I think it was, and drilled wells over here where the wells are in Hattaway County. Since that time, we have bought the land, and we own the Ashramont Water Development Corporation owns the land, the wells, the pipeline that puts the water over here. Also in the early 50s, the Water District, the board, and the city of Ashramont came to an agreement that the city of Ashramont would maintain and take care of the wells, produce the water, and pay us a revenue of $1,400 and so many dollars or whatever. We are a separate entity from anything else. We are elected by the public. We will have an election any time anybody wants to run for it. So far, nobody wants to run for it. Haven't anybody know anything about it, except us that are on the board. This goes back a long, long way, and if you need more, we'll talk later, but that's what it is.
But we were just trying, when we made up this, we were trying to think who would be in charge, and so instead of, we just had the impression that the water board would help with the city or whatever. So that's, when you say the WB is the water board, then it's really the city.
You want to explain why that the city pays?
Because we own the wells, and they need to buy water from us.
And have to maintain the line?
Yes, that's true.
And bring the water to the city?
Then, what came out of that, and it's a good thing all of this has in the past, because when the contract, the 40-year contract was over, the man that owned the land where the big well was was going to charge us a dollar a thousand for untreated water, which was an amount of $1.4 million in the 40-year period if we produced the same amount of water that we did. So we bought the land from him, well, another fellow drilled a well, and then we bought his land. So we only stopped, locked, stocked, and buried.
Here, so that's...
You ought to check out where it's piped from.
No, no, I'm just curious. I'm just curious about the water board. I don't know where everything else comes from, I just know where the water board came from, so I'm just curious.
When those gentlemen were here for this workshop, they talked about a division that they have, or a program that they have, that they come and help boards do basically the same thing we did there, help brainstorm.
The most effective board member, very effective board that they own.
Yes. And so how does that work, and how expensive is that?
I don't know how expensive it is. This particular board, this particular seminar was $2,500, and it was free because we won it at the Texas Midwest Community Network Conference. Probably around that, between $2,000 and $5,000. But they do, I've heard very good things about it, Tye, Texas had one at theirs, but it's effective board, how to have an effective board members. And I think it would be something worthwhile as a community if we all, you know, if we decide to do it or we're interested, I could get some information, and then maybe all of the entities can put in a little bit to help pay for this. I mean, if we want to do that.
I would like to see you pursue that. I don't know what everybody else's opinion is, but I think that that would be good for all the boards of them.
I think it would, because then, you know, we know sometimes just enough to be dangerous, just to get the basics, but if we can learn, and that's the whole thing, is we've got to learn to work together, it's not a, and that was kind of the purpose of this, later on, they said, "Well, we could've invited more people in the community, and that would've opened it up more." And I wish we had, but I had the impression it was basically centered to board members when I got the information on it. But it's like, you know, if the city has a project, and the EDC can help do something with it, or IDC, or even the hospital, or the school, if we can all pitch in, we have a whole lot more people working on that problem than just one group. The other thing is we, they really stress, you got to have somebody that stand up and say, "I will take the responsibility of that project." And that's kind of, that's why we assign it to each board, a different board. Then you have that project, now somebody in that, that board needs to stand up and say, "I will be the leader for that," and they have, we have paperwork to do, stuff like that.
Champion.
A champion, that's right.
When you go through the same process, sitting down, brainstorming, and then start working through the steps of how to attack the problem?
It was a very, it was a very interesting class. Y'all could've claimed it was really good. I thought it was, I honestly thought it was, it was very good. And Tammy, I guess I'm from the city.
Everybody, every board was represented in our community except for the county commissioners. They had other things going on, and they couldn't make it, but the county commissioners were the only ones that were not there. Everybody else had to represent at least once, and we did have probably two to three from each board represented. So I was very thrilled that everybody did show up. But I will see, I'll give more information on that.
I'd appreciate that, because I think it'd benefit our...
Martha did a really good job on that.
Yeah, it was...
And she's been doing, trying to get that together and bring everybody together.
Yeah, I think we ought to start getting the paperwork and start working the process towards the water issue. And we'll get the water board there as well.
Yeah.
Are there any questions for Martha?
I like your hair.
Thank you. I have needed that today.
All right, we move on. Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to council table. Everybody had a chance to look at that?
IP, Jenny, you were switched on with our letter. We had some issues on the last bill. They were not giving us the correct rate, and I called them, and they are in the process of taking, of correcting those, and also taking the taxes off, and going back to the month before also to take all the taxes off. So in the meantime, of course, some of our councils were February, some were March before they started, so we had to get the bill in stock. And we, in the meantime, weren't waiting on the new bills. We got, they kind of got caught up, so our letter bill was $7,300,000. That's all 30 accounts. But that's catching up to get them to where it's about the same size. They're not all going to be exactly the same, but they're in the vicinity of them. Because again, they will not change the billing cycle that, that you are able to have. But anyway, we are gonna get credit on the next bill, so, but this one, it's quite, it's kind of high, but it's too much on some of them.
Just, what is this?
It's a fuel bill.
Fuel bill?
Yeah. It's, yeah, that card, fleet card that we have.
IP Jane, you were switched on, I'll let it reveal. We had some issues on the, the last bill. They were not giving us the correct rate, and I called them, and, uh, they are in the process of taking, of correcting those, and also taking the taxes off, and going back to the month before, also to take all the taxes off. So, in the meantime, of course, some of our councils were February, some were March, before they started, so we had to get the bill in the pocket. And we, in the meantime, weren't waiting on the new bills. We got, they kind of got caught up, so our last bill was seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's all thirty accounts.
Oh.
Uh, but that's catching up to get them to where it's about the same size. They're not all gonna be exactly the same, but they're in the, the, because again, they will not change the billing cycle that, that you are able to have. Um, but anyway, we are gonna get, uh, uh, credit on the next bill, so, but this one, it's quite, it's kind of high, but it's too much on some of them.
Just, what is this, any...
It's a fuel bill.
Fuel bill?
It's, yeah, uh, our card, fleet card that we have.
Oh, okay.
We have one, I think, we don't have that much with the...
Wow.
We'll pay it, that card, I mean, you tell our tickets, and they give us everything they have.
We bought a flag. See that, Sydney, one says fine.
Oh, we, you know, we get our part.
Right, right, right.
We, out of everything, so we got a lot.
Finished the bill, the printer uses a lot.
Oh, I'm actually, just our little printer uses a lot.
Is that going better with that?
Right now, it's probably not. I make mushroom type of bills when they get filled with metal.
Do we have a motion, Kay?
I'm in.
I'll second it.
Dr. Fashion, second's a motion. All four? All opposed? No questions.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss application for the downtown revitalization, revitalization grant through the TDA.
That was, uh, we voted to do that, and they, Kay said we lacked one vote, being able to get that passed last time, and then that sits last time. We acquired one more business with...
One letter. We lacked one letter.
Yeah, one letter. So, we acquired one business that can give us that one more letter, which would be the little beauty shop thing down there. Uh, so we would probably qualify for the grant. The thing was, is we were looking at it as, there is a match to that grant of...
Thirty-seven, I think.
Twenty-seven and something.
Yeah, twenty-seven, and then three thousand.
Plus three thousand for the disposal.
A lot of that can be done in M-Kind, but the engineering cannot. We have to pay for the engineering. Now, Gerald's done the engineering, uh, I don't exactly know how many hours he's done that, but, uh, what that included on that was the new sidewalks, all the way, uh, from the senior citizens, all the way down to the end of, uh, where the wing farm deal is. It also included enclosing that the same way as what is over the Pony Expresso with that cedar and doing those things. And, uh, redo the curb and painting, and then also took care of the curb on the other side of, uh, the street, and then down in front of the, uh, flower shop. They had some changes in there, but that was really all that we could do unless we went in front of the bank, and then most of the bank is, is plucking lot, so there's not much curving there, but, uh, the engineering has done that, we just didn't get it, but, uh, as far as the money goes, we couldn't do that if we was, gonna have to come up with the money. But Kay said that we can do it, uh, in two years. Will we be able to pay half or a percentage of it in two thousand fourteen budget? And then in two thousand fifteen budget, we can do it as well, uh, which would still be the same amount of money. It's still gonna be twenty-seven thousand something dollars, but it would be spread out over, from now to end of budget of twenty-fifteen.
Are we into anybody right now with any money of this for right now?
No.
We're not into anybody?
No.
Is there any possible way, and I haven't talked to Martha about this, but, I mean, is...
EDC and IDC.
They cannot do that? IDC can't do that?
No, that's a grant. They would have to file for the grant themselves, and this, this is a whole different...
A whole different thing? 'Cause I mean...
This, this is a, downtown revitalization or the Main Street program.
Yeah, I mean, it could fall under some of that stuff and everything, because, I mean, I'm not being ugly, and I'm not, and Martha knows, we've talked about this. You know, IDC just don't do a lot of stuff. I mean, they've tried, but there's just the stuff that they can't do.
I think the best thing, the best answer would be on that is to call Kay Howard and ask Kay Howard if the IDC can file for it, you know, the city.
No, that's what, you know, I'm thinking, 'cause I mean...
But I think the way you'd have to do that is you would have to actually...
Just go ahead and file.
The way you'd have to start a committee for downtown revitalization committee, and they own the ball for it.
So, it couldn't fall under the IDC at all?
Well, and I don't know about the IDC. It's not in that list to be able to do that. They could do it on their own, but that's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, no, that's what, but, I mean, they could file, if they filed for the grant, if they talked to Kay, and like that, and they could do that, and they could do the match funds and stuff like that.
No, I mean, that, that would be something to ask Kay.
Okay.
Because if you look at the list for IDC, it's a no, but Kay might find a loophole for that bill, and we could go that way.
What about, I mean, what about the EDC?
We have no money.
If we, well, I know, but if you did the resolution that, like we did before, to get the money from the IDC?
That'd be a little question to ask Laura.
Okay, okay, well, I mean...
And we would have to ask my two boards, whether or not that's what they want to do.
Yeah, well, that's what, yeah, that's what I'm saying, because, you know, by looking at our stuff and everything, you know, no, I don't, you know, I don't think we have quite the money, and I think our main project right now is water, instead of, I mean, pretty in the town, but I'd love to pretty the town up, but right now, I think our wat- water is terrible.
Well, the main thing kept us down was, was the fact is that Aspremont has no historical downtown anything. Even, you know, the bank is old, it's there, but it's not really listed as a historical thing. If we can get some of those, then the amount of money jumps, and the match goes down. We just don't have that.
You can get the historical values, and, like, the motel and the banks and stuff like that? You would just have to have a designation, a historical...
I got a letter from the historical committee that said that we had none, pretty much. We had no historical...
I thought the bank was...
Landmarks, lots of other...
I did, I mean, I thought, is that a historical thing from Aspremont, or from the...
No, from the state.
State?
Yeah.
I thought the old bank was...
It's not listed in the state. So...
Can you, can you live stuff with the bank? I mean, the bank. Can you live stuff with the historical?
You don't know the state.
Can you go through the state, if it's not?
Historical committee.
'Cause I know Ozella was trying to do that one time, especially with our old jail.
You just have to be real careful with those about redoing it. It has to be redone exactly the way that they did it, match the mortar, match the paint, match.
Who would, who would have to apply for that? Would it be a city thing? Would it be a chamber thing? Would it be a community thing? I could do that.
But it, what, but the building is privately owned. It's not owned by any group. I mean, does that, does that make a difference? That's a privately owned building.
It's still privately owned, historical landmark.
It's, it's done, owned by the city, or EDC, or IDC. That's a private, now you're their property if it goes through. Yeah, I mean, that...
The thing is, is if it is...
They would, might say, I don't want to restore it.
Listed as a historical landmark, landsite, then the owner of that is kind of stuck, but...
Yeah, yeah.
So, you have to clear it.
I know that's what happened to Cheyenne. They had old buildings, and they had them declared, uh, historical, and pretty much the owner had to go... I, I'm not saying we need to dictate anybody, you know what I mean, but that's kind of... Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, if we can just see, you know, if you see what it, what it would take to be able to, how old, have whatever it had to be to do, to be in the local landmark.
You still have that list of EDC, IDC?
Not really, no, I've looked at, I don't have any disposal.
We, we look at that and get a, a really view of that first before we start getting Kay and James involved, but I don't remember it being kind of listed if we could do it with IDC.
The only, that's, I, they make a comment on. That goes back to this project list.
Yeah.
We need the sidewalks, but we need to go back to the projects that our community says this is our needs. I mean, I think that's a great idea, but I think we need to know more in advance besides right now saying what we had to do.
Well, last year when we actually did this, this was just something, at the time, that was offered for us to get involved, get to see if we qualified. At that point, I believe we had a year and a half of water at the time.
Yeah, right, right.
That, that's just something, I, I think, uh, what we discussed in the office was basically, uh, tell Kay to forget about it and go on, 'cause y'all have to vote on it tonight in order for us to get into that pool. If you table it tonight, then we won't get into that pool, and it's, it's a per naught, so, uh...
Well, I make the motion that we don't right now. 'Cause it's gonna come around, maybe two years again, so we can try it again?
It'll come around, yeah. It comes around every year.
Every year? Yeah. I make the motion, we don't get in the pool right now, because, like I said, I think that's way too much money for us to even have to pay it out right now. And like I said, our main concern right now is water. My second, ma'am. I think you'll wait on it.
Stephanie makes the motion, really seconds, to not approve, um, the application for the grant. All four?
Well, we have to have a match, um...
All opposed? I could have a stand, can I? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the council.
Uh, gonna update the, uh, if any of y'all haven't noticed, the building behind the city hall is gone. Uh, instead of purchasing a building, uh, for the chlorine stuff, and, uh, storage tanks, we moved that building down there, drug it down there. Uh, we enclosed it, made a chlorine, uh, safety room and a LAS room in there. Uh, we were, uh, numerously at times of being in violation for our chlorine residuals. Uh, now, we are gonna be, we, we won't have to worry about it. We will reduce the amount of chlorine coming from rural to here, so it will reduce on that service line, or the people that purchase water on that line, uh, their chlorine residual will, will be able to come down a little bit, and then we'll do, boost it back here to keep our residual higher here. Uh, it has tenfold different reasons to do it in the treatment deal. One is that, um, when we get to the point, uh, where the chemical, uh, combination is right, uh, we won't have to do a burn, uh, because we'll keep the chlorine residual up high enough that the ammonia won't, uh, take over in our system, so we don't have to do the burns and all. Uh, so, as far as the price things, uh, we won't see it real soon, uh, a saving of chemicals that over here at the time we will. Because when you're, uh, plus, and then the other turn is, is that in the eighteen miles of water travels from rural to here, we get nitrification, which our nitrate's, um, increased. When we lower it there, it'll be less nitrification, so we won't have that problem. Uh, once we pump it into the tower and it disperses the way that it does, it doesn't have time to nitrate it, uh, the way it does through that, that line, because it's cast iron line, it has rust pockets, it has polyps, and, and that creates other issues with the disinfectant. So, we've got that moved down there. They insulated, everything is done, and they will come and inspect it, probably next week, TCQ will be inspecting. Uh, anyway, we did not have to buy, the building alone that we kept, uh, trying to find or trying to build, it was gonna cost anywhere from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred, and so we saved that amount, uh, just by doing it ourselves. So, I wired it up, and, and we did all of that there. So, it's up and running now. We went from a point eight, uh, chlorine residual to a one point eight residual, um, in a day and a half. Uh, the, we have, or we did have the white storage tank full. Uh, it's been empty since the chlorine stuff, when they cleaned it out, it's been empty. Uh, so we filled it, we superchlorinated it, and, uh, we're dispersing it now. We're not wasting the water down the street. Decision was made. We had to get rid of fourteen foot of water. It was not, uh, it was drinkable, it was potable, but we had to circulate it through our system. And so, instead of wasting it down at Hickman's, or down by the other deal, just running it down the road, we put a line in the swimming pool and used it there. They will have to clean that water up, but that's not on us. Uh, plus, they're paying bulk rate for the water, selling the water.
Will that completely fill it? Will that completely?
Pretty much, yeah. Uh, I haven't, uh, we got down to, uh, around six foot in the white tank this afternoon, so we shut everything off, and it'll fill up tonight. We have to do that before this other thing. So, we've been really working hard trying to get it to the point where we can do this, and, uh, today was a good day, so, for that. So, that's, uh, we've been getting invoices in on that, and, uh, I say, instead of hiring everything down, we just did it ourselves, and, uh, so we ended up saving some money. And we ordered, uh, we had some bleed-through at Alsop's. Uh, the, uh, other lift hams come down and brought some rock, all they had. We used all we had. Uh, had a few cars get some, uh, tar marks on them, had a couple of trucks that stretched it all the way down to the Y, I think, but, uh, we got that situation done, so we did order two loads of pre-mix and another load of that rock, just in case we didn't have a bleed-through, uh, 'cause we have some patching stuff that we've got to get done. Uh, because we have some patching stuff that we've got to get done.
What, what do you mean bleed through? So, there's a leak in it's.
No, the tar that was in the, when we kept those roads, the tar bled through back through the rock. And there, it was just a little bit stout on, on the tack coat. So the sun and the traffic, uh, made it just bleed through, and the trucks were actually peeling the road up at one time until we got down there and started putting rock on it. So, kind of hit that as quick as we could. Soon as we got the home call, we started in. Uh, we just don't keep that kind of material in hand because we don't use it. But we just happen to have about three buckets full down at the, uh, due to a driveway thing years ago or something. So we ended up with a couple of bucket loads that helped. Uh, but I didn't want to do the whites raw because that makes it a little heavy. So, uh, Chris helped us with that. And as I say, we got the two loads of pre-mix to come in, which that comes out of the road from, so, uh, all that's, we're good. Uh, anybody got any questions on anything else? Let's talk in front, talk back. So this is, y'all have one of these. They look at this. You still got yours, huh? You got your stuff. Oh, you got the letter.
I didn't get this.
Okay.
How do you want to round your number to?
You can have that. I got one. Oh, yeah. Tammy made a copy. As we expected, Miller Creek had their meeting on the fourthteenth. Uh, I got this letter. It's basically stating they were going to have the meeting and discuss going into their stage three. Uh, they did have the meeting. Uh, he, uh, he was here, uh, Wednesday afternoon and brought me the enforcement and the allocation stuff. On the allocation amounts, just a little sheet right here, I'm going to look at is each month, the tar minus twenty-five percent on the deal is all we're allowed to pump out of there without it going into enforcement. And I didn't make a whole lot of these, but the printer messed up, made a bunch of blanks. If anybody wants to look at the allocation stuff.
Do you need to?
No, I'm, I'm good. Uh, what has helped us, whether, uh, I know we've discussed this a lot in, in the months past, but what has helped us tremendously is over the period of, of the last five years, we've sold a lot of water to the oil field. And that sales of that water has increased our amount of allocation that we're able to give. So if you look, June first, this goes into effect. And so in June, all we can pump from Miller Creek is two million seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred gallons without going into enforcement. And there.
Are we still, um, providing water for the, uh, water services?
No.
No, we took that off.
No, we, we eliminated, uh, well, they were able to purchase thirty thousand if they needed to, but they haven't been. They've been, uh, they pretty much shut their meters completely off.
They're going outside, you know, doing it from these little wells, water wells and stuff.
Right, but, but they're basing our water needs on that, and we shut that off.
Prior to using the channel.
We're no longer selling any water to the oil services.
Uh, now with that, with y'all looking at that, it's, uh, two million seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred. Now, that's Miller Creek water. That's not our well water. And we mix it, and our mix ratio would be determined by what our nitrate levels are in order to keep our nitrate levels low. Uh, last month, we did a fifty-seven percent mix. So, you know, if you look at that deal, and we're still able to do a fifty-seven percent mix, we're looking at being able to produce, you know, five point five million gallons. If the nitrate levels go up, of course, that's going to drop as well. Uh, right now, we, we're not going to get any leeway on that at all. So every month is going to change, and so we've already started paying attention to pumping records of wet pumps per day. Because I'll have to take this two million seven hundred and twenty-four thousand divided by the days of the month, and that's all we can pump for that day period. And if we go over, uh, that amount per month, then it's one point five times the amount that we pay. That's the enforcement. And for y'all to, to kind of get a, an understanding, last month, uh, our, if you would have looked at the allocation for last month, it was two million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand. We pumped two point five million gallons. We had an eighty thousand gallon loss due to a water leak between Haskell and rural. That put us over allocation by a hundred and ten thousand total, which would have made us five percent over. So we would have had to pay one and a half times for that amount of loss. Uh, it did. It don't take a very big week to do that. So we have to be real careful. We have to catch leaks when they happen, uh, and do those kind of things. Thus is the reason why, when they put us in stage three, we go to stage four. And that is because we have to be prepared for a water leak out at any time. Uh, and if we don't have that cushion, then it's us that pays that extra money, you know, not the customers themselves. We have to pay for the loss. And so anyway, we have to, y'all have to discuss going into, or what y'all want to do.
Let's say, do we have a contingency plan?
We have a drought contingency.
Do we have, I mean.
Yeah. From where we were to state to drought contingency four, we can do a whole bunch of different things. As far as the public goes, what changes is, is there is no sprinkler system can run unless it's a drip system. They can only run during their normal times to deal, uh, to water. Uh, cannot wash your driveways, cannot wash your car, you cannot wash your RV, you cannot wash anything unless it's done at a commercial parlour. Uh, in stage four, that is still, you can do that. Our drought contingency plan, because we rewrote our drought contingency plan last year, uh, because we, we went through all of the, the town hall meetings and stuff with that deal. Usually in stage four, it eliminates any bulk sales. We took that out of our drought contingency plan because we have numerous bulk sales. Uh, it's not just the loading rack that we consider a bulk sale. So, um, there's several different things we can do that y'all, you know, we can discuss and talk about what y'all want to do, how we need to do it. And I can give y'all some numbers and, and the facts. And one of the deals is, is, uh, we had several that stated that there was no way, uh, that we could survive on nine thousand gallons allocation per family. Let several do that. Uh, so we set it at nine thousand, even though, you know, because we had to. We set our budget for nine thousand gallons for all meter connections. We did not count the car washes, thirty thousand. We counted it as nine. Uh, so we have to count every connection we sell water to, so we were looking at close to eight hundred connections. We based every connection on nine thousand gallons. We are not selling nine thousand gallons. Out of five hundred and seventy-two meters, eleven people, eleven residential people went over seven thousand gallons. I don't know how we can ask our public to do any better than they're already doing.
I don't either.
But the bottom line of the fact is, is that we're still having to pay for the water, and our revenue is down thirty-five percent due to that. So what Aspremott is doing, even, uh, Miller Creek and all of them, has used Aspremott as a building block for everybody else. Because we're doing what we're supposed to do. Uh, but we sell a lot of water.
Who's the bulk, who, who we sell it to? Who are the bulk sales to?
Well, e- every month it may change. Uh, last month, our bulk, the biggest bulk sale we made was to Tri-Tro. They, they had a big leak.
That's the Peacock farm.
Swenson uses a lot of it.
So those are other residential clients in, in, outside our thing? And do we sell them to the same, at the same rate that we sell to, uh, Aspremott clients?
No, we sell them water in bulk claim instead of.
Is that cheaper? Or more expensive?
It, it averages out to be about the same. Because what, what it, what we used to do is this, and it got into this, um, whole bunch of a bee's nest thing, is what we used to do and how the building was set up is that we would take Tri-Tri's line, and we, they would say they had thirty-seven meters on that line. The city would charge them twenty-two fifty for every meter that was on that line. And then we'd give them two thousand gallons a minimum per that deal and subtract it from their usage and then bill them for that amount. The problem is, is as the city, we can't claim those meters.
Right.
That, that falls under a whole nother.
Do we have any non-residential bulk sales?
We don't, other than, we got, well, we got a couple of cattle companies that are non-residential, uh, business, but not bulk. There's, you know, the only bulk sales we actually maintain is the loading. For the city, the water, except the water. We sell water to farmers and things like that, which, uh, it's under our drought contingency plan to raise it up to fifteen dollars, you know, so we need to do that.
And that rate, uh, is that what a residential customer will be paying, more or less?
Well, that's what we need to decide.
Well, right now?
Right now, no. What the residential customer is paying now is fifteen dollars for two thousand gallons. Uh, and then, uh, from two thousand and one gallons to nine thousand gallons, they pay five dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, from nine thousand to fourteen thousand, they pay six dollars or something, and anything over that, they pay.
If I pull up to the water to, or my two thousand gallon tank, how much is it costing me?
Eight and a quarter.
So it's half the price of a residential?
For the first two thousand gallons. For the first two thousand gallons, it's still.
It's eight and a quarter for a thousand gallons?
Yeah, right now it's for a thousand.
So now it's sixteen fifty for two thousand.
So it, it's kind of, the only way that a residential pays that amount of water is if they use a lot of water.
Right.
Normally, the case, how you set your stuff is you pay, say, we do fifteen dollars for two thousand gallons. Most do fifteen dollars just for your meter, and then you pay X amount of dollars from zero to two thousand, or zero to three thousand. Everybody does their billing different, and we did our billing really different. How it was, ended up being pretty close to the same was with Tri-Tri, with Swenson and them, uh, we could not count their meters. So what I did is took and divided it out of what it would cost them normally for that same amount of water, and that's what we charged them. That's eight and a quarter. Well, to sell Tri-Tri bulk rate water at eight and a quarter is to get, you got to try to get everybody else the same. So that's kind of how we set that last. But, uh, that works when people use their water. But we have one bulk client that pays eight twenty-five for their thousand gallons of water. They're allocated two hundred and fifteen thousand. They use fifty. So that's a downside for us. I mean, it's great that we're saving the water.
Who's that? And what are they?
Oh Glory. Oh Glory has.
Lose a residential customer also.
Uh, and they have, according to the sheet they sent, they have no cattle. They're not watering any cattle. That's just strictly residential. So we have the task of setting what, you know, as far as our drought four contingency, it's still allocation because we're in allocation. You can change the allocation amounts. You can change the price amounts, uh, with, with the, with the same drought ordinance. You have to redo that. You change your billing amounts, uh, change the amounts of water that you, uh, give as, as a minimum. And change the steps that it takes in order to get it where you charge whoever is using the most water pays the most for it. The people that don't use the water don't pay any more for the water. We did a couple of sample deals on some price changes, and I think Tammy's water bill would have went up seven dollars, but her leases would have went up fourteen. But her niece uses a whole lot more water than she does. Yeah, so those are things, first we have to, you know, y'all have to vote to go into stage four. And then you go into stage four, then we have to start the process. We can't do any ordinances or any of that tonight because it's all we can. Uh, we just have to, um, I was thinking, and I, I've kind of mentioned some of this, is they're going to put us in stage three for them. Do you like? It's not right for us to put our people in stage four.
Till then.
Allocation until after that. We need, we need to do that at, at, you know, at that middle of our billing cycle or thereabouts. Uh, June first, we go into the stage three through them. We can go into stage four here with the times to water and, you know, no watering grass, no watering landscape. We can do that tonight, but any of the allocation amounts changing or price amount changing, we can't do. But that's something we're going to have to look at and, and come to a decision on pretty quick of how we're going to do it.
Do they need to have a copy of that contingency that you were looking at?
I'm, I'm not going to.
So, so this is May, and you said June first, they're going to put us in the stage three for sure, which we've already really been in, in stage three, basically?
Yes, we, we're, we're, how we labeled that was we labeled it stage two with allocation, which is actually stage three.
Exactly.
So we got to go to stage four because they're putting us in stage three. The state, the difference between where we were and stage four, as far as our drought contingency plan, is that you cannot water with a installed water system now, unless it's a drip system, uh, and you can't wash your car unless it's at a commercial station or thereabouts.
Okay.
Those are just a few things that changed in between the two. It's supposed to read that we don't sell water out of our loading rack unless it's at home use. Uh, it also cuts out anything like if we had construction, uh, it cuts out that. Uh, we cannot take and all of a sudden decide to lay a new, when we have a two inch line, and we decide we can't just lay a four inch line. Uh, no customer can come in and request a, from a three-quarter inch meter to a one inch meter. There's, there's those things that change in the, in the stage four.
Construction for the city, infrastructure? School?
Like a business coming in, like a road crew coming in needing water to water the road. That's no more. We couldn't, can't do that, which we hadn't been doing.
Yeah, we have, they've been called.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. Well, usually a city has a fire hydrant and has a meter, and we've got one back here that's set up for a company to come in and they fill up their water truck or whatever, and we just charge them bulk rate and we're going up to business. We can't do that. That, that's one of the things that's kind of seething, so. But residential, as far as that goes, the changes are no watering, uh, except for on your designated days from eight o'clock to midnight, uh, those two days a week. Drip system, five gallon bucket are handheld, overwater those, tap water, no fountains, no water or things. Uh, no swimming pools, no fuzis, no hot tubs, none of that. You can't fill them up. That's, you know, if anybody in the city has not already filled their swimming pool or their fuzi or whatever, then, you know, they'll get hung by if they fill it up now.
You know, if they haul it or something.
Right, if, if you haul it, that's still, that has nothing to do with it.
Exactly.
Uh, and we cannot limit anybody that has their own water well. If they're watering, that has nothing to do with us either, so, uh, that, no limitations on that. But, uh, like we discussed before, uh, I think council meeting for it, one before that, as far as the swimming pool is concerned, the county swimming pool is concerned, uh, we're going to use, uh, we have to waste water, and we need side town all the time. Our waste on that side of town will be just, uh, the first little bit will be put on the ground and then diverted to the swimming pool. Uh, this will still go and run down the road, but they've made arrangements. They're hauling well water in.
Exactly.
So they'll keep that pool, which that doesn't, our, our meter to the pool is turned off, so as of today. Because we're done wasting, so that, that shut that off. So, uh, the stage four for us is just, uh, and I did have a flyer. I gave one to Ralph that we have to pose for things like that, y'all go, vote to go to stage four.
Because I think we really need to discuss, discuss, you know, the, over here, getting water out of that. Too many people depend on that. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, there's some animals that they have to haul too, but there's a lot of households that haul all of that.
Well, I've had one household person come and talk to me, and that's it. Uh, I don't know how many did it for households.
Oh, there's, there's a. Oh, there's, there's a bunch out there.
And the, the thing is with them is, uh, that's just part of what we have to discuss to figure out what we wanna do. Uh, you know, I, I don't make those decisions, y'all do.
Well, and I mean, you know, even, I mean, there's still, you know, there's still gonna haul to, you know, livestock, which, you know, there's some that they've got to keep their livestock, keep their livelihood.
Well...
I mean, there's some people that's gonna have to do it, and I think we should take that into consideration, cause that is their livelihood.
For an instance, to, for an idea of, of, and I think Dave's mentioned some of this too. Seymour, the city of Seymour has a loading rack. They sell to several individuals that own homes out in the county that don't have a water line. They also sell to farmers and ranchers to, to water livestock. They set their limit on their loading rack to thirty dollars a thousand. If a residential person uses that water, or residential alone, goes and pays for that water, they pay thirty dollars for that, then they come and get a reimbursement back in the city because it is residential. Um, that's the only way that's feasible to do those things, and they have to prove that it is a residential deal by the county ledger and all that stuff. Those are just things.
Yeah, well, we know, I mean, I know right offhand, you know, who does it to their houses. I mean, you know, and that's what they do, or, you know, it's to their houses.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna live, though, we don't wanna turn those people off, and that's never, that should never be our intention to do those things. We just have to be able to allocate it to the ranchers and the farmers, because it's not for human consumption to that deal. Uh, and the only way to do that is to, the price hike is what keeps all that down.
You really need to, you know, to, if that, I mean, is there any way, I mean, I know you could still keep working on this or something and do it like that, and let's just table this to the next meeting?
Well, no.
Or we have to...
We actually need to vote on the drought contingency to be in stage four. The other stuff, we need to have a meeting, a special meeting, to be able to discuss all of the options to do it. We just can't do that tonight.
I make a motion, we go official. Effective June first, is that correct?
And are you gonna have a, a town meeting?
As y'all said at the last one, we, we have a town meeting, but with stage four.
We certainly do. We'll have to educate everybody, you know, you know.
We'll have to come up with a, with a game plan first, and then we just will present it to you.
Right, the people wanna know.
The thing is, is the, the, the deal is, people in Ashramont have done over and above what the city has asked them to do. That is not an issue whatsoever. We can't ask for anything better. And since they're doing so well, it has put us in a situation. So that's, that's kinda where we're, we're at at that, at this time.
Imagine where we'd be if we didn't sell all that, you know, water to the, yeah, to the oil companies.
It, it's good and bad, but, you know, our, our budget, our operating expenses are based off of the sale of water. That's our revenue. Um, we're thirty-five percent below where we need to be, even though we're still using a lot of water. We're thirty-five percent below that because ninety percent of the people in the city limits are only, are using less than seven thousand gallons. You only have a few that are using over that. Uh, we counted two months, uh, two different billing cycles, and it was pretty close to the same. Out of eight hundred meters, we had twenty-five going over seven thousand gallons. Out of the same amount of meters, uh, you subtract your commercial and your bulk rates. You take your bulk sales to Swenson, you divide how many peoples in that deal, you count those up, and then add it to your businesses. We had eleven go over nine thousand gallons. I don't know how you can, you know, leave...
So these other bulk residential sales, I mean, if the drought continues and gets worse, I mean, is there a contingency in the future to cut off everybody but Ashramont residents?
We really can't do that. I mean, we're kinda obligated as a purchase, as a seller of water.
So why don't we just go ahead and incorporate them into the...
I, I could visit with you on that, extend if you want me to, but it's not the place right now.
I don't like this one about the restaurants.
That's a typical thing.
I, I, yeah, I know, but I, I don't like that part in there. I mean, that's not that much water. That is not.
It's, it's not, it's not the amount of water, it's the, the presence, it's, it's the, the knowledge of having where you're at. It's the only reason it's usually listed. It, it doesn't amount to a whole lot of water, but when people see it and then they recognize what kind of situation you're actually in, uh, which, which, you laugh and smile, but there's a lot of people who really don't care. Uh, you can ask Tri-Tri that. It's people that don't live here that turn on the faucet and then leave and run a hundred thousand gallons on the ground. And it's those things that are, that are hurting us, uh, as far as our amount of allocation goes.
And there's a lot of stuff we could do. We could have everybody put a brick in their toilet and, uh, you know, God knows what's out to save. I mean, seriously.
Well, you know, you, you say it in most, and for your plumbing code now, anytime you do work on your house and you replace a toilet, you can't replace it with another tool. It has to be a water saver tool, a water saver nozzle. You're not even supposed to sell those if you follow your plumbing codes, just your, this, your...
It's still a plug, it's still a wall, if I'm right. Is that correct?
Yeah, so...
All right, so Dr. Bassman made a motion, the city is in here at stage four, the drought contingency plan effective June first, is there a second? It's like, three seconds? All four? All those? No, she cares.
I'd like to ask something, if I can maybe to somebody to make a motion or whatever. There's a lot of stuff to go through. Uh, I've done it already, I don't know how it looked, uh, I think I have some of it to Ralph, but it might not be a bad idea to have a little drought ordinance come in. They can work with me to, to be able to present this to the council, uh, so it's just not so one-sided. Uh, cause the one-sided is me, I'm, I look at all the numbers, and if I can show you all the numbers and we can come up with an amount of what we need then, and not be so locked.
Well, I understand, is we can legislate anything, but there's no enforcement to, to...
Well, on this, on this there is. We have, we have one ordinance, which is a billing ordinance, that we run in the paper one time, and then it automatically goes into effect. On our drought contingency, it's also an ordinance that it's enforced through the billing cycle. So, um, it's those things which, in the billing cycle, in, in the city deals, and that, that allows each one of the council members, each one of the city employees to file a complaint towards whoever's violating this deal, and then it's, we just apply that, a twenty to five hundred dollar fine to the water bill. Uh, that's still an, so we had to do, um, that part, but that has to be red flags. So we can't, we pass it one day, then the next day we come back and pass it again. That's a two-reed deal. And what do y'all think of that?
That sounds big. I will be on it. It's all right.
He has a good plan for Rusty.
Cause I...
I mean, I've got like three gallons, I can't...
I mean, essentially, we're just, we're caught with our pants down. There is nothing we can do to prevent this at this stage. We just have to kinda hold on and wait that the drought ends.
Right.
And then make some corrective action in the future so it never happens again.
Right.
I mean, that's...
Well, and our, uh, our past drought contingency plan was based on pumping records, not off of consumption records. Uh, we didn't even know what the pumping records were. So all of that information has just been accumulated over the past two years. It's not something we can just draw back on and see what we've done. Uh, but what throws us in the frying pan is the fact that we have to purchase water from Miller Creek, and they put us in allocation. That's what throws the link in. If we could just, uh, with the research and the stuff, we have the deepest wells in the Seymour office, which by standard should mean we should be the last people to run out of well water. Okay, Rules said that as a city and a PWS, we have to find a second source of water. Ashramont did that. First we got the wells, because the lake went kaput. Then we second sourced it, we went to Miller Creek. And that's our second source. We will be forced to find another source of water other than the Seymour office. So we are working on it. We've got lots of things going, but you ain't gonna like that one, because bottom dollar right now is about two million. Uh, I, I've talked to several, uh, trying to figure some stuff out, and we've got a lot of things in the, in the works. Uh, it's not out of the question for us to be able to do it. And there's other options, they had a meeting today in here with one of the, uh, the other deals. We have to see how that turns out first on some of that, because TCQ and the EPA will come in and help us do some of this.
Help us with part of the larger...
Yeah, it's, everybody can't be scared about it, we just gotta, and, you know, when the government says, hey, we're here to help. You know, we, we gotta, we gotta believe that.
And TCQ is...
Texas Commission on Environmental Protection. And we follow, are, most of our rules, we have to follow there. Uh, let's say it's, it's, uh, I've got some stuff here, if y'all wanna see it. Uh, I got, I called Stanford, Anson, Haskell, Hamlin, Rules, Fur, North City, Rebbe, Jaden, and Glory never works, it, it never there. Glory's water rates are, are really high. Uh, I talked to Rule today, they're having a special meeting, uh, which they purchase water the same place they do, and well, they use their water. What Rules drought contingency plan is, is they're going to allocation, as of June the first probably, uh, five thousand gallons on the allocation, they will charge twenty-two fifty, uh, for the first two thousand gallons. Then it'll be four dollars a thousand for that other three K. And then everything over five thousand, they will charge ten dollars per thousand. That's what their, their drought thing is, what they're looking into. Um, Hamlin, Stanford, and Anson, none of them are in any stage of drought contingency.
Where do they get their water?
The reason they're not in allo, the reason they're not in a drought contingency plan is because they receive water from Hamlin kinda like how we do, uh, Miller Creek. They allow them X amount of gallons.
Wow.
They're not going over that, so they're not in any kind of allocation.
I mean, what is the, I mean, for like future things, you said we're gonna have to find another source of water, and I know we've talked about different things, you know, you know, like said, of doing it, of us getting on the Hamlin water line.
Oh, well.
You are using that to be too expensive?
Oh, you're, you're looking at...
Well, I mean, I just, yeah, I'm just...
Well, and I can't quote you really good prices, but for three-inch pipe, you're looking at three dollars and sixty-five cents a foot for the pipe plus whatever it costs to, to bury it.
Right.
We would never be able to tie onto that deal. We would probably request too much.
I definitely, that was just a question, I had not...
I'm researching the, uh, the Stanford thing.
Mm-hmm.
Because Stanford gets their water from other places as well. But I think our main deal is, and I, it's, it's kind of not a secret, uh, what the, the deal is, is Billy had brought this up, and several times it's been brought up about desolidization plans.
Yeah, we've talked about that.
Those are billions of dollars.
Right.
We can't afford that.
Right.
But we can do what they call an EDR plan, which will take brackish water and treat it to where it's able to be piped. There is a well filled out to the south of us that...
That's plenty of yours.
That supplies a lot of brackish water.
Right.
Uh, if we can get TCQ, which I've got them involved, uh, we've already been eliminated from the pilot point, which is a half a million dollars, our pilot study. That's a half a million dollars for that, which we would've had to come up with first. Uh, they waived that on us, we don't have to do that. Uh, if the sample of water is the same as what the city of Pilot Point's water was, then that's gonna help us as well. The, the way to get the EPA and the TCQ involved in this is, is that the city of Ashramont becomes a regional water supply, which means we would have to be at a point where if Haskell needed water, we would back pump it to Haskell. If, if, uh, Hamlin wanted to buy water from us, we, they would lay a line to us and we would be able to supply. Uh, those are the things that we have to get involved in.
Well, that's when we put a, a tank of our water out there, and then you mix it with that, that water like that, isn't it? That what we talked about last time?
Yeah, we would actually still, we would still have another, probably put up another storage tank.
Right.
And kinda do different things to that, make, the process was gonna be a little different, but not much. But I'm working on all that stuff, it is...
But I, I mean, like I said, we talked about that last time, I think that is one of the best bets right there is to, is to do that.
Well, and I've...
I mean, to really go for that part right there.
I've already been, uh, the city has already been offered, uh, land and the water, no cost, if, if it works out, uh, two miles out of ten. Uh, it's supposed to be a good well out there, uh, of course, we would have to drill the well, which is around a hundred and something thousand dollars for us to drill.
Well, wasn't there some kind of offer made as far as drilling, that also?
Yeah, the lawyer, he was gonna look into to make sure they had the right licenses, and I think they do.
Yeah.
But the English has already said that they would do that for your charge.
And they'll cut us a price on that. What, what the city would have to do then would be apply for the permit, which is anywhere from six grand, higher. Uh, then we would have to get it approved through TCQ, through the engineering, which we'd have to hire an engineer to design the well. And then we would bid it, have to bid out whoever drilled it, they're free, and of course we'd pick that, and they'd have to give all of the specs to that, uh, engineering specs to build the well. Um, so it's, it's a big ball of stuff that we have to do, but...
But appears at this point to be very doable.
It is doable, especially when, you know, I know you say two million dollars is a lot of money, but to find us a reliable water source that costs us two million dollars, that we can do a bond issue to, or there's other options we can do, um...
Long-term?
Long-term.
Water-term?
My whole thought is, if we're gonna, if we're gonna pay somebody a hundred thousand dollars to drill a water well, I'd rather pay, I'd rather pay it to somebody here than I would go to Hamlin and pay, pay that guy.
Well, that's, when it comes all down to that, that's what, you don't decide to do that.
That's, that's the way I'd be, I feel, we oughta, we're gonna pay, pay somebody that, you know, whatever the cost is, we're gonna have to pay some of that for somebody to drill a water well, I'd rather pay somebody here.
Get their licenses, for TCQ, for us to legally do that? Absolutely.
Yeah.
And if it don't cost that much, you can get them licensed.
Yeah, and that may be, that may be a plan also.
I don't understand why they're not, if, uh, because I know they drew, they, they, they were telling me the other day...
I'm not saying they're not, I don't know what they're like.
I know, but I've been saying the other day, they were telling me that they, they built a well in the white.
And the other one's drilled well right next to the waterhouse and dickhead.
Yeah, but that's for water and grass, that's not for...
Yeah, that's not for city consumption, that one, but, um, the lawyer's looking into the licensing for, for the other ones.
Yeah.
Um, to make sure that they are compliant with TCQ, and, and once that's there, that's not an issue. Or maybe it's, maybe it's an upgrade to their license, you know, I mean, it's...
I mean, a lot of it has to do with the equipment in order to be able to pressure pump the sea and things like that. Cause they have to be pressured, seeing that it's, if it's equipment they want, I think it's gonna be a license thing, so. You know, it just kinda all depends, which, I don't, you know, that's, that, when it comes up to the bids, that's, y'all do that, that's... But anyway, that, I've probably said about too much, I probably do, but anyway, is anybody... Anybody wanna help me with this, kind of, some kind of something we can present?
What do you mean?
Next week. Well...
I'll help you.
The way, the way that the situation is going is, in order to...
We might have to have...
For us to stay where we need to be, we need to change our rates, our total billing rates, to actually take the hold of people who overuse water, but not to raise the rates to the people that are eating lunch. So we're not looking at changing...
And is there already a penalty for overuse consumption?
There is, but...
So you wanna increase the penalty for overconsumption?
Pretty much.
By what, I mean?
Uh, well, there's a, here's some, uh, what I was looking at is for residential rates, two thousand gallons is already fifteen dollars we need to run. Um, anything from two thousand to nine thousand, you go to eight twenty-five, which is, uh, our twenty-five percent increase for the water consumption. Then anything over nine thousand to, to twelve dollars is already ten dollars per thousand, uh, anyway. So that doesn't change, but anything over the twelve thousand, we need to...
So are we, are we giving or selling any water to anybody that isn't a, a residential customer or a local business?
No.
No.
Not really, no.
I think, I mean, I think you need to take into consideration too, and I'm, like I said, I know if they went over twelve thousand, if they had a leak, you know, if it's something they cannot help it if they do not catch it in time.
And that is always...
And I don't think they should be charged for, I mean...
If they tell me in time.
Did they have a notice the last one, though, to take that on a case-by-case basis?
It's already, it's already in... It's already, it's already enforced. If somebody knows they have a leak, and they come and talk to me...
Right.
When it comes to the account number, you know, Vanessa and I, Vanessa marks it.
Right.
We, we discuss it, and she marks it. If I know they've had a leak, then they pay for the water, they just don't pay the fine. They still pay for the water.
Well, I mean, that's understandable too, but I mean, like, you know, if you've got, if I had a leak between my house and I wasn't ma, looking at my leak, my meter every day, you know, and it wasn't wet or something, because it's so dry anyway, I wouldn't know I had a leak till I read my meter.
We, that happens.
Yeah, you know...
I had one under my house that you couldn't see, and saw it where the leak was.
What I do, on that, on that situation, we've had a couple of those situations here, where, on the fifteenth, when they get their water bill, they show up and say, I didn't have a water leak, or, and then we go, yes, they did have a water leak, and so, you know, there's no adjustment. Or we have people that use a lot of water, and they said they had a water leak, and then when you go through the billing program, it, it doesn't show, it just shows usage.
Right, well, I understand that, yeah.
So, so you have to take...
I just don't wanna tell a lot of somebody that maybe couldn't help it, that had a water leak, that didn't realize they had a water leak.
And some people are honest to that point, and, you know, and so you just take them for their word, and you go, I believe, there's a couple here that's done that, and I'll, I'll adjust that. But if I look at your last water bills in, in five years, 'cause we do that, and you used nine thousand or twelve thousand gallons last June, did you have a leak or did you not have it? I don't know that much.
Well, I understand that, yes, I understand that.
Then you would have to bring me a plumber's statement saying, you fixed your leak, and then I would arrest the bill, but you'd still have to pay for the water.
And we're not talking about a whole lot of money. I mean, I, I make the motion, we adopt the...
We can't, we can't. We will have to have a special meeting next week, I think Ralph's gonna be gone, but we have to post that by Friday to have it Tuesday, which would mean we can, y'all tell me what you want, is...
I'll help you, if you'll holler at me next Tuesday night.
I won't be good for it.
I'm up all the time, I gotta be there in fifteen minutes.
I, I've got, I've got a lot of stuff down on paper to, to look at, where we need to see, that, it's my opinion, and y'all need to look at it to see, you know, correct me. I think Ralph looked at it, I didn't see your writings, so...
I just figured the, the bills for the customers around, surrounding, there it is, if they use six thousand gallons, just, just in case for comparison.
Well, that, that was what we had on the last town meeting, I believe, is, I, I said our allocation needed to be at twenty-five percent reduction. You know, we needed to be at six thousand per residential customer, unless it was a household of, of, might be, it was six, to get nine thousand. I don't come up with the numbers, I'm just related, but I believe we were swayed to leave it at nine and go from there. But we're seeing that typically, in our city, everybody's using about six thousand. But I personally didn't wanna take an allocation our city anymore, because not only, you don't know when they're gonna go over six thousand, because they could at any time, you got company coming in, you know, you know it's closed, that could happen. But our residents pay taxes, our residents do the things in the residence. So, I wasn't trying to affect our residents more than I was trying to affect the outline, because we have absolutely zero control over our outside water lines and our bolt cells. We have no control over those. If we have a leak in town, we're called within twenty-four hours always, and the leak is fixed, it's turned off, it's done. There's a leak between here and Rule on a farmer or rancher, on Sweet Home or whatever, it's a month before we catch it. At that point, it's already a hundred thousand gallons. Two minutes, two gallons a minute leak for a month is a hundred and eleven thousand gallons. That throws us over five percent automatically, no matter what we do, by that one person doing it. So, we have to be able to make that one person pay, but not make somebody here that did not use it pay. That's what I did with all my figures, and trying to do it that way. And yes, it does put a strain on our outline and our bolt cells, which means Old Glory, Tri-Tra, Flaneby, Sweet Home, all of those, it does put a little more strain on them, but it also puts more responsibility on them than on us, so...
So, we have an obligation to purchase, what, two thousand gallons from Miller Creek every month? Do we ever give them the money but not accept an entire allotment of two thousand acre feet?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Well, that, that should, I mean, that's part of that.
That's part of the contract, we can't do nothing about it, it's the contract.
And also...
What do you mean we can't do nothing about it?
That's, that's the contract.
We don't have storage facilities where we can take a walker and hold it when we need it later?
We have eight hundred and twenty thousand gallons here, and they stay full, because at, at any given point, we can use four hundred and twenty thousand in a day.
So, in the last six months, how much, how much water, how much of the, of the two million gallons per month have we not accepted?
We've purchased, you know, we've purchased every drop, and there were a lot in, food there. And it was, it's, it's actually three point two million gallons, our total amount. Say there was no drought, we were pumping water from Miller Creek, we actually could get three point two million gallons. We pay for three point two million gallons whether we use it or not.
Right.
Now, what that, what it does is say in the month of January, we only used one million gallons, but in April, we used four million gallons.
Oh, that's a long...
At the end of the quarter, we don't, we're not over. But if we are over at the end of the year, we pay fifty percent more for that water we're over. That's kinda how that works, and we've had to do that.
And Miller Creek kinda has us over a barrel a little bit.
But they don't, they don't, they don't do the thing like, in January, if you don't pump your entire allotment, and then, and then in February, if you need another extra amount, you can't pump that, you, you, is it they don't pump that?
Yeah, we can.
So, they do it on a quarter basis or a year basis?
Yeah, they do, they do it on a yearly basis, but now they're doing it on a monthly basis, so...
Are you allowed to roll the months? I mean, if you don't pump your entire allotment, you're not allowed to get it next month?
If next month, or this month, excuse me, if next month in June, the end of June, we only pump two million one hundred thousand gallons, we pay for two million one hundred thousand gallons. The next month, we're only allowed two point nine.
Oh, so...
Whatever we didn't pump was not allowed that amount, and it's month by month.
So, storage capacity is a big deal, though.
And keeping eight hundred and twenty thousand gallons up here is, is important, but up until recently, we couldn't do that, so, but now we can, so... So, there, they, as of tonight, or first thing in the morning, we will have eight hundred...
So, we have, so we have storage for eight hundred thousand gallons, and how...
Plus, plus a hundred thousand gallons.
Nine hundred, and nine hundred thousand gallons will last this however?
Depends on the usage of the day. We're, we're using, right now, average, we're using about a hundred and thirty thousand, but the last few days, we pumped...
Hundred and thirty thousand a day?
And yesterday, yesterday, yesterday and the day before, we used two hundred and ten thousand gallons. Over the weekend, it was a hundred and eighty and a hundred and seventy thousand is what we used, so that our consumption has, went up quite a bit from last week. But today, the consumption today has dropped just a little bit since, I guess since it was cloudy this morning. But weekends, we've been, we've been hitting it pretty, pretty hard. We've got the percentage rate, we're trying to keep it, and it's getting to be extremely hard to keep that percentage rate balanced, but yesterday, we were fifty-five. The day before, we were fifty-four percent well water. We need to be at fifty-seven to sixty percent well water in order to have enough of average production for the city of Ashramont and our outline bill. We're never gonna make it. We're gonna be over every month if we continue on the same path that we're going. We've been over every, if, if you go back, from every month, starting January, under this allocation, we have been over every month, because we just use a lot of water. But, let's say, what has helped us in the last few months, or what's helped us for the next few months, is gonna be that oil boom that hit with all the fracking that took place last July, June, July, and August last year, because it put our average way up there, because we were selling them over a million gallons a month, so...
I know it was nice revenue, but...
It was.
So, we ran out.
I'll make you much when you're done.
Second.
Good.
Hang on, hang on, you seconded.
I need, I need to get your number three.
When are you gonna, when are you gonna be, when are you free?
Every, any time. I can type her out, I can pay a pinkie promise to go to my bigger girl's graduation, and I miss my...